Welcome to the July 11th, 2023 City Council Work Session. I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Good afternoon. Before us today, we have Ashley Kirchner, who's Chairman Exec for Downtown Lynchburg Association, together here with her Board Chair Chris Boswell. Thank them for being here. Ashley's going to engage you on this Launch LYH that recently happened, some really encouraging things as far as investment and opportunities here in our downtown. She'll also, since we last met, we had our July 4th celebration that looked at fireworks. I think we had fireworks Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday here in the city, which was fantastic. And so, the Fridays were downtown, and she's going to give you a little feedback on people and opportunity and all the great things that happened that Friday. Also, we have Tim Mitchell that's here with us from our Utilities Department, Water. He is going to engage you about a CSO tunnel project. Now, we talked about this in the fall, and many of you were not yet on council, and it's going to be impactful enough that I thought it important because there's a few updates that I think you should know about. And also, we're working with a very large business here in town to accommodate parking and some of the construction that's involved. I did get to tour or was out on site with Tim and also our geologist that had taken borings, which is pretty interesting as far as the rock and what have you. And the good news is that we have substantial earth to be able to kind of have this structure put underneath it and nothing happen above, which is fantastic. And maybe I'm getting ahead of Tim a little bit. We have one business item briefing and then also a closed session. I'll take this moment here. At some point, you'll see Kent White maybe exit the back. He's heading up the street. At 5:00, our Lynchburg City School Board and Superintendent and some other folks are going to meet to hear what the consultant is putting forward as far as next steps with facility update. I sent some notes to you. So, subsequent to that briefing, that will be uploaded to the school's website. I gave you a link, making sure that you kind of know what's happening as far as that briefing. Kent will be there in person to hear it. Then also, just as a highlight to you, and many of you understand or know this, we've positioned August 8th, your next meeting, as a joint work session about that exact topic. So, with that, Madam Mayor, back to you.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to our work session item number one, Launch LYH and Fireworks on the Riverfront update, Ms. Ashley Kirchner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Members of Council for having me. Let me get a little test here before I get going. It should be clickable, right?
Yes, it should be.
Aha, all right, thank you. So, I'm here today to talk about two programs that we recently completed. The first is our Launch LYH program. The second, as Winter mentioned, are Fireworks on the Riverfront. So, I want to start with the Launch LYH program. This was the inaugural year for this program. And as you can see, the aim of this program was to foster economic growth and further revitalize the heart of downtown Lynchburg by providing support to entrepreneurs. So, I want to go through a little bit about the basics of this program, what it was, and more importantly, why we are doing it, and why we did do it, and why I hope we continue to do it. So, you know, at a very basic level, this program provided startup grants to those who were looking to start a new business or expand their business in a downtown Lynchburg storefront. So, that is who this program was eligible to. Now, here were their three primary goals. The first was to reduce storefront vacancy in downtown Lynchburg. The second was to create new amenities and attractions, and the third was to support entrepreneurs. So, let's look at that first goal for a second. Storefront vacancy was something that we identified last year in the process of doing our new strategic plan as the primary issue and challenge in downtown Lynchburg that we wanted to focus on moving forward. There are a lot of reasons for that, but, and by the way, it's 22% is where we were at as of July last year. We look at this once a year, and 22%, which means that when you're walking through downtown, 22% of the ground floor commercial spaces that you walk by are vacant. Now, we know that that's a negative thing, just because walking by things that are empty doesn't really look good for the city, right? But there are also some real economic challenges with storefront vacancy. It lowers the surrounding property values, which obviously means less revenue for the city, and then also the lost potential tax revenue of a working business in those storefronts. So, that's an issue in itself. But also, it lowers foot traffic, right? So, we need enough foot traffic in downtown for the existing businesses and for future investors to want to set up shop here in downtown Lynchburg. We need an ecosystem to be able to make this all work, right? And empty storefronts don't help with that. But also, the increased perceptions that downtown is unsafe, or that downtown is not moving forward. And then, from a just general city perspective, when you drive through there or walk through there, people that are looking to move here, people that are looking to invest here, the perception is that possibly we're not doing well, or that we're not an economically successful city, right? All of that is not true, but the perceptions, you know, are also important, and they have an economic impact. So, we wanted to make sure, I'm sorry, and the last thing I should mention is also that vacancy increases crime. It increases, you know, vandalism, graffiti, and other illegal activities. So, this was our major challenge. We wanted to think about different ways that we could go about addressing this. So, the first thing that we did was look to the state and any grants that they had available. They have a program called the, this is through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, they have a community business launch program. So, we applied for that. We were one of three cities to be awarded that year, and we got $90,000 to kickstart our funding for this program. We then went to local companies to look for some additional funding, so we could get to an award pool of 100, so not only cover the cost of administration for the program, but also be able to give away $115,000, because we wanted that number to be significant. Giving out $3,000 grants to potential businesses, we didn't feel would be significant. We wanted to help them have enough funds to really start up and be successful. So, we opened up the program to those with the following criteria. They had to be willing to open up or expand in a downtown Lynchburg storefront. They had to be in one of our four target areas for downtown businesses based on the downtown master plan, retail, restaurant, attraction, or downtown residential amenity. So, we opened it up, and we received over 100 applications, which was not at all what we expected. We were blown away. We absolutely knew that there was untapped talent and, you know, entrepreneurial talent in our community that, you know, was not yet coming forward, or maybe didn't have the capital or resources to get started, but we were truly blown away with how many were interested in the program. So, of those 110 applicants, we had to narrow that field down to the number that we could move through the program effectively. So, we had a panel cut that down to 25, who we felt were most ready for this process. They then went through an eight-week education series that was run by the Small Business Development Center Lynchburg Region, which, this is what they do, right? They help businesses figure out exactly what they need to know, and then they actually workshopped their ideas through those eight weeks of classes. There were two tracks. There was a track for new businesses and a track for established businesses, so everyone could end up getting the education that was on their level, it would help them move forward. And those classes really became also an area where the participants were also helping each other, right? So, at the end of that eight weeks, they pitched their ideas to a panel of local experts, and we chose seven businesses who became the winners of this competition. And those seven businesses are slated to open in downtown Lynchburg in the next year. So, we're going to talk about who those are. We had three $25,000 recipients, and the first of those is called Super Rad. It is going to be an arcade bar in downtown, a family-friendly arcade area with live music nights and game tournaments, and just kind of an overall fun zone that I think you all know is a really important element to a thriving community, that we have fun things for people to do. So, that is exciting. Prem is the next one. It stands for Plants Rule Everything Around Me. This will be a, this will be a plant store, and it will cater to indoor house plants and also education for how to do that, which is a very popular thing with the young people right now. Wolfbane Productions is a theater company. You may be familiar with them. They have their home in Appomattox. They will keep their outdoor home in Appomattox, but they're moving their indoor storefront, which is currently there, into downtown Lynchburg, which we're very excited about. Lynchburg Golf and Social Club is the second endeavor of the River District Golf and Social, which is in Danville. It is a sports bar, family-friendly sports bar with e-golf component. It's very popular there, and we're really excited to have that element in downtown. Mosaic Collective and Threaded, this is our one business that is expanding rather than brand-new. This is a socially-conscious retail shop as well as a thrift store concept that is kind of tailored to the younger audience and really brings in social issues to the work and the things that they sell. The sixth one is Easy Speak Dance Hall, and that is going to be the home for a lot of our traveling, kind of places that don't have homes right now, like the Salsa Club and Swing Dance. So, these are troops that travel. There are, you know, fun nights that you can go to, you can take classes, you can do all those things, and they've been looking for a home for six years. So, we were able to give them this funding to kickstart that, and now they have found a place where they're going to permanently set up. And the last one is the Lost Playground, which is going to be another entertainment concept that is putt-putt, duck pin bowling, again, another family-friendly place that can be an amenity for downtown Lynchburg. So, a couple more notes on this program. Five out of the seven have already signed leases or have letters of intent or are very close. So, we were able to match already those five with existing storefronts. And part of this program, too, was about matchmaking, right? About making sure that we're working with the property owners, the brokers, to understand what's out there, what's available, and also what's coming that might not be publicly known, right? So that when these potential tenants come in, we can say, we know what you need, we hear what this vacancy is, how can we put you together and make sure that this is a good relationship and a good place. We have two left to place. We feel very confident that we're going to get there. So, these, you can expect these to open within a year. Some of them will be open by the end of the year. And then, the last thing I'll mention, too, is that we are waiting on word from the state for a second round of funding, so we're really hoping that we can do this program again very soon. All right, and then the second program that I want to mention and give you a little recap on is Fireworks on the Riverfront. This was our third year doing this program. Again, it happened on Friday, June 30th, in the park. This, you know, this event, if you have been, I know some of you have, I've seen you there. It is just one of those really beautiful, feel-good Lynchburg events. You see people from all over the city and as well as the region coming in to our city and just celebrating, obviously, Independence Day, but also it feels like a real celebration of our community, which is really beautiful. Like many of our events, it is free and open to the public, so it is accessible to all. Family activities, food, music, fun, funded by local sponsors, and I just want to specifically mention BWXT, because they're a huge sponsor of this, and we rely a lot on our local companies to be able to help make this happen. I want to give you some numbers on this. So, this year, so this data is according to Placer.ai, which is, uses cellphone data to track people's visitation, where they come from, where they go, all of that. So, this year, the Riverfront Park numbers for that day were 5,160, which is wild. That does include the whole day, but our average daily use of Riverfront Park on Fridays for the past four, before that, were only 100 average per day, so the vast majority of this was for this event. So, 72% increase. You can see this is becoming more and more popular, and the entire central business district also saw quite a bump as well, and quite a lot of people. If you've seen this event, you know that there are a lot of people on the riverfront, but there are also hundreds on the Bluff Walk, there are hundreds at Point of Honor on Percival's Island, and then also throughout all of the residential units and in the businesses. So, we are excited about this event. We love doing events like this, but I want to mention also why this is so important. Obviously, we want to make sure that we are providing an excellent quality of life for our city, for our community, and that's fantastic, but there's also a real economic impact of events like this. The one-night total estimated economic impact of this is $160,000. So, just one event brings a lot to our community. All of the restaurants were packed, which means more meals tax revenue for the city, and obviously, it means more chance for success for the businesses that we have. Just as an example of that, The Water Dog, which is obviously adjacent to the park, had their single biggest night that they've had since they opened seven years ago on that one night. So, you know, these things really do make an impact, and obviously, from a community spirit and pride thing, too. We love them. So, that's all I have to share. Thank you for the opportunity, and if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you as always, and excuse my appearance, Board Chair. Thank you for working with us, and you do this, and I'm on board. I have to commend the Governor for prioritizing the Downtown Lynchburg Association to the degree he did. The press release I've looked at, I believe, is the same one we're talking about. Lynchburg received twice the dollars as opposed to the other two organizations, so it's really wonderful to see the Governor prioritizing Lynchburg to the degree he is. So, I just wanted to mention that as we're considering this, and thank you for being the facilitator for that quite intense process of sifting through 100-plus business proposals. That's certainly something to commend. Thank you.
Any last? Dr. Lobbe, House Missions?
I'm pretty impressed with what you guys did with the Launch LYH thing. I thought it was pretty, I was actually kind of sad that I couldn't make the pitch event. That was pretty cool. I just have a question. How do you come up with those numbers for how many people are down there at the riverfront?
Yep, so it's a software called Placer AI that the city has purchased and uses, and they use cellphone data to track all of that, and it actually goes back three years, so you can get historical data on, you can draw boundaries around specific parks, you know, we have Bluff Walk numbers, but they have it for the whole city, so that's where we get it.
Gotcha, that's cool. And the, I kind of did the, how often do you think we have something like that downtown? Like, how many?
Yeah, something of that size. I mean, fireworks is certainly the largest event, but, you know, we used to do Get Downtown, that was the single largest, right? Fireworks, I would say, is just under that. I think moving forward, the park will have things that size pretty often, but those are the two largest that I could think of right off the bat.
Yeah, because for every 10 events that we do at that capacity, we're looking at 1.6 million in revenue, if that number is accurate, which would be great, because I'd much rather have people outside the city, you know, building our tax base, so we can reduce the tax base and, or reduce the tax burden, excuse me, on the people that actually live here. So, so let's keep that up.
Thank you.
I'd like to commend you and your board for the work you do in our downtown community, especially focused on those vacant properties, on those black properties, so important to kind of bring businesses into our community, so it looks more lively, so it really adds to the quality of life for our community. And I attended the event that you had at the, I think it was Virginia, the Lynchburg Launch. It was all like a shark tank event, with so much excitement, and just see the awards and many diverse programs. It's reeking of wide variety of people, a wide variety of ages. It really shows a beautiful community spirit. So, I'm so thankful that this project is here. I'm just so excited about that, the work you do in our community, just to see your planning and the future growth we're going to have in our community to bring the people from all parts of our region into downtown, which is like usually the center, the mecca of your communities in downtown. So, thank you for having a beautiful way of having added to the quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much for joining this project. I was at the event where the awards were given, and it was just so impressive to see the enthusiasm and the expertise that was showcased that evening, and I think it's so important to show that kind of support for those businesses as they start off, and happy to see Wolfbane settling in downtown Lynchburg, too. That's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Captain Hudson?
Is this seed capital or kind of more matching?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Is it seed capital or matching?
Yes, it's seed. So, they were allowed to use it for inventory, they could use it for the first couple of months of rent, they could really use it, there were a number of ways that they could use it. It is a reimbursement grant, so they have to submit what they've paid for, and then we invest in that.
I'm just, I ask that because I'm mindful, I've been around long enough, and wasn't too terribly long, at a grocery store downtown that got money from the government to buy the building, got money from the government to rehab the building, got money from the government to run the business, and a grocery store, which is something that we've heard from a long time, there's a food desert and all, there's no grocery stores. Grocery store that opened up downtown was only open eight months until it closed. And so, with that, when I see, you know, typically, I'm in the financial world, and with that, people look at, you know, different perspective, very objectively, as opposed to what, you know, kind of a neat mission or something may be. They look at the financial objectives. And when I see that grocery store and I see that pattern of all of that that went to one business that lasted eight months, I just, I hope, there was lots of, you know, due diligence. Hopefully, there was lots of people that said, hey, this isn't going to be, you know, you got the $25,000 or $10,000 and gone. But I'm hopeful, but skeptical, just because I've seen this happen many, many, many times. But glad to see new vibrancy. I do recognize that vacancy that has been tremendously high downtown, you know, in spite of, I don't even know what the number is, hopefully, we can get that fairly soon. Several years ago, it was about 110 to 105 million, I think, spent in downtown. Back in 2006, somewhere around there, when we got a great, we got an award for the amount of money spent in downtown. So, hopefully, the spending isn't just the metric, but the actual results, the vibrancy, the non-vacant storefronts, the things that happen. We spent a lot of money, I know this wasn't on your doing, but a lot of money on really, really beautiful sidewalks and, you know, brick pavers and cobblestone that after the fireworks, I heard from some people, and hopefully, it's not going to be something that people trip over, you know, because then it becomes a city liability. So, anyway, but fantastic, you, Winter, you had mentioned earlier, Thursday, or Tuesday was actually the 4th, so you stopped at Monday. But there's fireworks also on Tuesday, so Friday to Tuesday was fantastic. Fireworks are wonderful, especially when they're done in a place that people are there to watch them, like downtown and right by the river, and, you know, it was great to see them, the fireworks display that was done at Thomas Road, it was great to see the fireworks that were done at the Hillcats, where I can watch them on my porch, and so it was neat to see. It was Friday to Tuesday, which was neat, so, anyway. But the fireworks are fantastic, and hopefully, we can be looking at some of this before we, you know, spend more money on these hand-laid cobblestones and bricks, we'll think about what happens after the roots start going and the, it starts buckling. So, events downtown aren't going to be, that are at night watching fireworks, people don't have to be looking for trip hazards everywhere, but love the fireworks. Thank you.
So, I loved all the ideas, specifically, I know when we went out and did our tour, we talked about, I know you couldn't, we didn't even know some of these things were going to happen yet, but we talked about some of these very ideas, so I was really excited when I saw some of these actually happening, because I know these are some things I've heard, you know, I told you specifically, I feel like I have a focus group at my house all the time with my kids being the ages they are, 16 to 24, and some of these falling right in line with what I've heard from, you know, I think our, you know, what our average age is 28 in the city, so really falling in line with what that age group is asking for, and some of these businesses are going to, I think, do amazing. So, I'm really excited. I think downtown looks beautiful. I'm excited to see us move forward with some of these businesses. I think they're all going to do great, and, yeah, the fireworks were wonderful, we were there. I thought it was just so cool to see the city filled with life. I didn't really hear of any big concerns, safety issues or anything, everybody seemed to have a great time, so thank you for all the work that you put into it and for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next item, CSO Tunnel Project update, Mr. Tim Mitchell.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm going to give an update of the CSO Tunnel, CSO 52 project, and some of the presentations some of you have seen, as Winter mentioned earlier, some of you may have seen some of the slides last year, but felt like it was important to kind of recap what CSO is to begin with, where we are with the program, and where we are with this, with this major project. So, just a little bit about combined sewer overflow. So, when, originally, when our sewers were built, they were state-of-the-art. The idea was to get the sewage and stormwater away from the populated areas as quickly as possible, so everything was put in one pipe and piped to the nearest stream, and the streams carried the pollution away. That was before wastewater treatment plants were built, and that was back in the mid-1800s is when some of this was started. And, but then, as, when we built the wastewater treatment plant, we built large pipes called interceptors, and basically, they collected the combined sewage and carried it to the wastewater treatment plant. But when we had heavy rainfall, the pipes that were built were not big enough to carry all of that rainfall, so there were overflow pipes constructed to still discharge the combined raw sewage and stormwater into the nearest stream. So, during dry weather, when it's not raining, all the sewage goes to the wastewater plant and gets treated, but when it rains, is when we have the combined sewer overflows. That's when the sewage overflows and goes into the streams and the rivers. So, just a little bit about our program. This is really a nationwide issue. There's 860 cities across the country that are combined sewer cities. There are three in Virginia, Alexandria, Richmond, and Lynchburg. Our original 1993 consent order with the state required us to eliminate all of our overflow points, and we started out with 132 overflow points throughout the city. To date, we've eliminated 115 of those overflow points. We renegotiated, a big important part of our program is, in 2015, we renegotiated our consent order with the state, and in that renegotiation, basically, we came to an agreement with the state that we wouldn't have to eliminate all of the overflow points. We'd eliminate most of them, but then what overflow points were left and how much sewage we discharged would still be in compliance with water quality standards, so we would, the pollution that we were discharging was not excessive enough to pollute the rivers to make them impaired. So, that renegotiated consent order really saved the city nearly 300 million dollars, because we didn't have to eliminate all the overflow points. And then, over the years, since I've been here, we've lobbied and received over $100 million in state and federal grant funding for the program. And as I mentioned, we've eliminated 115 of the original 132 overflow points, and we've reduced our overflow volume by 93%. And to date, we've spent about $307 million total. So, CSO 52, this is the biggest remaining project in the CSO program. Besides this project, there's only like three other smaller projects totaling about $15 to $18 million in today's dollars remaining in the program. So, we've been working on this program since the 1980s, and my goal is to finish the program before I retire, so that'd be a big accomplishment, I think. So, anyway, we have CSO 52. This is a, an overflow point along the Point of Honor Trail, and the picture on the screen is the actual overflow point. So, it's two pipes, and it has, the end of the pipe is called a duckbill, it basically keeps water from the stream from flowing back into the sewer line when the stream is up. But in addition to overflowing through those pipes, which is a permitted overflow point, one of the problems with this area is the pipe, the main sewer line, isn't big enough to handle the dry weather flow and even a little bit of rainfall. So, in addition to it overflowing here, it also overflows through manholes along the, along the trail and into the stream, which is not allowed by the state or EPA. So, in order for us to, we really had to come up with a plan to address the CSO issue at this location, but also a plan that would restore the capacity of the sewer line so that future growth can continue in the city. This area serves 2/3 of the city, or the sewer line serves 2/3 of the city, including 221, 501 interchange and that whole area there, which is growing a lot. So, it's important that we take into account the future growth of the city as well. So, options that we considered included in looking at parallel pipes, so another pipe to carry the flow, storage, so big storage tanks somewhere along the line, complete separation of the flow, of the stormwater system and the sewer system coming to this point, a combination of a couple of those options and a deep tunnel. A lot of CSO localities are going with, are building these deep tunnels to handle the flows, because it's the most effective way to, to deal with CSO. So, the tunnel itself, we've worked really hard on the alignment to try to make the alignment work with the hydraulic needs of the, of the system, but also to avoid private property. Even though we're 100 feet deep, we would still, if we were under Even though we're 100 feet deep, we, we would still, if we were under any private property, we'd have to acquire a subterranean easement to cross that property. And we wanted to avoid property, but private property. So this alignment does that. The only property that's really impacted is US Pipe. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But the rest of the alignment is on city owned property along the Blackwater Creek. So that's very important. And then another factor with the alignment is the radiuses that are in the alignment allow for two different methodologies for constructing the tunnel, either a drill and blast operation or a tunnel boring machine, which I'll talk about. So these are the two tunnel construction alternatives. See, the, on the left hand side is a tunnel boring machine. So this is a big machine that would be, would actually drill out the tunnel. And the tunnel again is 80 to 100 feet deep, so it's, it's a very big tunnel and very deep. The other option is to drill and blast. Basically, the picture on the right hand side is the contractor would go in and drill holes in the rock face and then put a blasting charge in those holes and blow some of the rock face out and then remove that and start the whole process over again. The advantage to a tunnel boring machine is it goes much faster. The disadvantage is it's, you have to pay for the tunnel boring machine, so it's very costly. The drill and blast is, the contractor could get started on it much sooner, but it is a slower method to construct. Just looking at the, the pump station in sight. This is, this is a parking lot down at the end of Seventh Street. It's actually owned by US Pipe. And we would need a portion of the parking lot for the construction of the tunnel and ultimately the electrical building and diversion structures and all the other appurtenances related to the tunnel. So in this diagram, you see the orange is the tunnel shaft and that's about 38 to 42 feet in diameter. And again, 80 to 100 feet deep. And then the 12 inch, 12 foot diameter tunnel. So the finished diameter of the tunnel would be 12 foot. So the actual excavated portion of the tunnel is probably about 15 feet by the time it's excavated. The red structure is the electrical building because we're going to have a pump station. So the idea is that the sewage would flow into the tunnel when it's raining. And then when the rain stops, we'd pump the sewage out of the tunnel, back into the sewer line after the rain stops and then it would be treated at the wastewater treatment plant. And the blue structure is the diversion structure to divert flow from the sewer line into the tunnel from this location. And there's going to be another location where that can be done as well. And then the green is the pump station that would pump it back from the tunnel, back into the sewer line. This is the shaft excavation, basically what it would look like. So it would be drilling and blasting the shaft down about 80 feet deep. And through, through the geotechnical work, there's about 20 feet of soil on top of the rock. But after you get to that, then it's about 60 feet, 60 to 70 feet deep in rock that would have to be removed. And then that would be lined with concrete. And this is just a diagram of what the pump station would look like. The, the diagram on the left hand side is the pump station. It would be below ground. The diagram on the right hand side is the electrical building, which would, would be above ground and visible. So just some keys to the project's success. So these, these are the biggest issues that could impact the project's schedule or project viability remaining. So one is we need to obtain approval from Norfolk, Norfolk Southern to cross under their railroad track. We've had several meetings with them and they're working with us on the design and reviewing our, our drawings. We have another meeting with them tomorrow. So we'll discuss it further. They've committed to expedite their review so that we can stay on schedule. The second bullet point is called a categorical exclusion. The Virginia Department of Environmental Quality has requested that we do an environmental assessment on, on the project. So basically that is looking at all the impacts of the construction of the project, noise, vibration, dust, just other potential endangered species impacts, that type of thing. We are trying to get what's called a categorical exclusion from that requirement because we have big concerns that if we have to do the environmental assessment, it's going to impact the schedule. And because of the funding, the schedule is very critical. So we're working with the Department of Environmental Quality. We have a meeting with them on Thursday to talk to them more about the financing of this and the, potentially the categorical exclusion. But we're, we're working on a response to DEQ now to request a categorical exclusion. So that, that would mean we wouldn't have to do the environmental assessment. So that would save money. It also would save time. And then, as I mentioned, we're working with US Pipe on the property. The couple of things that we are looking at with them is the, the picture on the left hand side shows two parcels, the, the red outline on the farthest to the left, that's the site that we'd need for the pump station. The other red outline is city owned property that were actually leasing to US Pipe. And we've been leasing to, that property to them for, for years. So one of the proposals that we're considering is swapping the property. We would acquire the property where we need the pump station. They would then take over the property where they're using for parking. They could, that would free them up to use it for other purposes if they needed to. We're also looking at, the green area is, is a portion of Adams Street. And it only serves US Pipe, the portion that's outlined. We're looking at potentially vacating that right away. So all the, all that would take council action. We'd propose to come back and probably sometime in the fall with a definitive proposal that we would work out with US Pipe to, for council review and approval, or review and hopefully approval. And there, there also, there will also be impacts to their operation. This is a, at least a three year project, so we're displacing parking for, for them for three years. A lot of work going on in the area. There will be some, they're, they're wanting to, probably wanting to have some sort of compensation to help offset some of their expenses related to being inconvenienced for three years that we would be discussing with them and council. So current status, we received 60% design plans on 6/20. We had a meeting today, pretty much all day, going through those design plans with the, with the consultant that's doing the design on the project, pretty much page by page, looking at those plans. 90% plans are due in September and then final plans are due in December. The geotechnical work, Winter mentioned this earlier. It's in good competent rock. When you're drilling a tunnel, you want it to be in good solid rock and deep enough where you're not disturbing anything on the surface. So blasting or drilling or whatever the case may be, would be negligible if any impacts to the surface structures because we're going under railroad track and a couple of bridges. So we want to make sure that whatever structures above the rock, above the tunnel is substantial. And then ongoing discussions with DEQ and US Pipe and review with the railroad. So just a little bit about the cost and funding. Currently, through FY 2024, we have available $112 million of appropriations from city council. We have been awarded a total of $50 million from the state in ARPA funds for the project. $25 million of that requires a local match, which can be Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund money, which we will be applying for by the end of this month because that's typically the best money we can, the cheapest money we can get because it's usually the 0% interest or there's some principal forgiveness associated with that. And then a little bit about the schedule, the project must be bid by December 2024, which we really need to be bidding it well ahead of that. And we have to be complete with at least a portion of the project by December 2026 to meet the ARPA schedules. So right now, we received a, an opinion of probable cost from the consultant. And right now, the estimate is about $98 million for the project, plus or minus about 20%. So we're hoping that the, as they get further into the design, they'll refine the cost more and we hope that it tightens up and hopefully it comes down from the $98 million. But it's kind of where we are with the, with the project, that's the schedule. And be glad to answer any questions on the, on the tunnel or the CSO program.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilman Hallison?
You said one of the items that you, that you had thought about, which that's, I heard about that a long time ago, was the storage. That was like using a bladder kind of system only in the, when it really rains and a place to store before it's treated. So that's kind of set on the sideline in place of the tunnel, is that?
So the storage for this would need to be roughly the volume of the tunnel. The tunnel is essentially a storage, so we'd be looking at...
Just looking at your, you said there were several different things that you looked at.
Right.
The storage is still there. You said other option, you know, options considered, parallel storage, separation, and then the tunnel. So is the storage in conjunction with the tunnel?
So the storage, there, there were a couple of things looked at for storage. One was to look at big storage, underground storage tanks. One was at Hollins Mill Park. The problem with that was it wasn't really in the right location. The other location for underground storage tank was in the US Park, US Pipe parking lot. But we still had to get the flow to that, so that would require another pipe to get the flow there. And when we looked at the cost of those compared to the cost of the tunnel, the benefits still weren't really there because we still needed to capture about 4 million gallons of, of flow, regardless of where the storage was. So the tunnel kind of is a combination of storage and conveyance. So it'll store the flow and keep the flow in the tunnel until we can pump it out. But it also helped move the flow downstream to avoid the, the overflows that we have on Blackwater Creek.
And so the storage then will be able to store until it's actually treated rather than just the raw sewage going in the river?
Correct.
Okay, which is good. So you've, you've, so that's, it did, the storage didn't get, you know, kicked to the curb. It's just being used maybe slightly differently, but...
We looked at, we just looked at a number of options that, that would just storage and not, not necessarily a tunnel.
And so you had some of the problems that you may encounter. You know, I think you said you're digging a tunnel 100 feet underground. And so hopefully most of the issues above 100 foot below tunnel are really not going to have much impact at all. So do you see any problem with the EQ saying, oh, you're, you're disturbing the ground so much even though you're going 100 feet under the, the ground? That may have a little slight agitation or disturbance?
No, we, we have actually received approval of a preliminary engineering report that talks about the tunnel from DEQ. So they have approved the tunnel concept. One of the things, one thing that was very critical was the geotechnical work, the drilling and the core samples that they took because they look at that for various things. They look at it from rock fractures that could allow water to run into the tunnel. For example, the tunnel is below the Blackwater Creek and the James River. If there's a big fracture in the rock that the river started flowing into the tunnel, that kind of defeats the purpose of having the tunnel. So we want to make sure that the rock is, is good and solid and as the geotechnical people say, competent to where the water infiltration into the tunnel is minimal. So all of that was really looked at in detail with the geotechnical work. We feel, feel we're not going to, there's not going to be really any impact to any type of surface structures or utilities or anything like that.
We had two that have never been done, but they're both done right here in Virginia. One is building, boring a tunnel underneath US 460 while cars are still going on there, right over by, you know, the, the tunnel going under 460 to connecting Liberty's campuses. Then the other was going underneath the train track. And so, I mean, that was right underneath the train track. It's not 100 feet under. So hopefully there won't be, yeah, and hopefully, and, and I'm sure the, it's not under rock, but it's also, I mean, I imagine some level of the pipe has got to have some ability to, to withstand just based on the solidity of the pipe or how solid that pipe would be to be under there.
So that the, the design of the tunnel would be to go back, once the tunnel was excavated, it would be lined with, with plates and then filled in, all the voids would be filled in with concrete to make it, make sure that it's solid as well.
Can you put in cobblestone in those? Sorry, 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 sorry. Well, I make it pretty.
Yeah.
Good. It, this, it sounds like a good, so back to your, your concept of the money, the way you stated it, I think it was maybe, I maybe heard it slightly wrong. But the total available is 112 million, not just city. And then the additional was the America Rescue. That included all of those things was the 112 million. And currently it's about 97 million is what I thought I heard you say.
Right. So the, the, what council appropriated is 112.
So 112 includes all those other things.
Gotcha, correct.
Well, sounds good. Well, hopefully that'll be, be decent. Now the Griffin Pipe or the US Pipe, I'm hopeful that we can, you know, I think that will probably be more the, the bigger challenge, you know, because if you're putting it there, trying to get, making sure that they're not, you know, before they agree, to make sure that there's some level of ability for them to continue. So hopefully that...
We have been working very closely with them and had, have had several meetings and they understand the importance of the project. And they're very willing to work with us, but we have to be a little flexible too to make sure that we aren't impacting the...
One last, one last question. This evening, we have, we're voting on the second reading of the bands, of which Ms. Witt had said that some of it is for water and sewer. Is some of those bands for this sewer or do we have this combined sewer? Or is that a totally separate issue?
I think that, that's, I think that's totally separate because this, this would not be funded with bands.
Because this is already by the 112. And so now with that, in the two year timeframe, we're most likely to try to get it closer to the bid, or the, the estimated price as opposed, because, you know, when you look at your numbers, we estimated originally in 93, 300 million. We spent 307 million and there's an estimate of another 300 million. It's obviously the math because of inflation or whatever. So at the, at the 97 million or whatever you're anticipating now, if it's done within, I think you hit on there, 2026, so three years, hopefully it'll be at that, obviously with a little 20% plus or minus standard deviation.
Yeah, so the contracting, the bids that we're receiving from contractors now are really unpredictable. And we think that there's going to be a lot of interest in this project from tunnel contractors around the country. Actually, just as an example of the magnitude of the project, the construction project manager from Stantec, who is the consultant that's designing this, they, they just hired him. He was on a tunnel project in California. He's actually bought a house in Lynchburg and has moved to Lynchburg for, specifically for this project. So he, the, the magnitude of the project's going to attract hopefully a lot of contractors. And that's one, one reason why we designed it the way we did, to either be able to use a tunnel boring machine or drill and blast because if a contractor happened to have a tunnel boring machine that would work already from another, another project, it might, they may come in with a low bid and be able to get the project done much quicker. So we wanted to provide as much flexibility as we could. But it is a, it is a big project and there's still a lot of unknowns as far as...
A tunnel, a tunnel boring machine, I mean, you look at, it's like nine tenths of a mile, it looks like, what you estimated here.
Right.
So can they go that kind of distance or...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, actually, this is kind of on the borderline of...
Too small?
It's almost too small for a tunnel boring machine because they like to have big projects, like miles long, several miles long.
Interestingly enough, once they're done boring, they leave the machine itself in, at the end of the tunnel? With keys in it if you'd like to...
Yeah, a lot of, in this case, they probably would. If, if they happen to have an exit place for the tunnel boring machine, then they might remove it. But a lot of times they do bury it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any questions?
I want to make sure I get a ride along in the tunnel boring machine. That would be pretty interesting.
We'll definitely do tours of the tunnel and everything.
Yeah.
Because it, it will be a very neat project. I mean, it's very expensive, very important, but it'll be...
And I'm really interested in that. What'd you say, it was 42 feet in diameter, 80 feet deep? What'd you say, was forty-two feet in diameter, eighty feet deep in that storage tank?
I'm sorry?
Forty-two feet in diameter and eighty feet deep on that storage tank?
On the, on the tunnel shaft itself. It's forty-two feet in diameter.
The shaft, okay.
Right. So...
And that's, that's what's going on the, proposed to go on the US pipe property?
Right. Yep.
That's a huge shaft.
It is. You have to be able to, because they'll, they'll have, either they're gonna have to be able to lower a tunnel boring machine down into the shaft or they'll at least have to lower like excavators and drill rigs and everything else down in there as well.
Yeah. I mean, that's just, I mean, it's just a massive project to be able to do something like that. Great job on all the planning and homework and what it's taking to go into putting this plan together.
I keep thinking big subject tank. [laughing] A very big subject tank, yes.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, I mean, that's, that's just a massive, one of the massive undertaking to do something like that.
One of the things that we're, we are concerned about is odors. You have a tunnel that has sewage in it part of the time, you pump it out, you're not gonna get everything out of it. We are making provisions with the design to allow for an odor control facility to be installed as part of the pro, or not as part of this project, but as a future project if odors do become an issue with the project.
It's kind of interesting that you're, you know, talking about downtown business a minute ago and now we're talking about bringing New York City odors to downtown right now. You know, that's, that's great that you guys are already thinking ahead to the, the odor control and those things. Um, there's a question I had, I'm trying to remember what it was. Where's the water table down there right next to the James River?
The water table?
Yeah, like, like how deep is the water table next to the river?
It's not very deep and that's, that's, so they, they do, with the, with the borings that they do, the, these, this picture is core samples of the rock and they, they look at water, once they drill, take the cores out, they look at the water infiltration into the, the holes. They also look at any fractures that might allow water in. Fortunately, because the, the density of the rock and it's very hard rock, we think we'll be below a lot of the, the water issues.
Above it, maybe above the water, water table.
We may be below the water table, but because the rock is so competent and hard...
Yeah.
We're, we're hoping that we won't have a lot of infiltration into the, the tunnel itself and if, if we do, then that'll have to be mitigated, the, there's ways to, to seal up cracks and that.
Yeah, and that, that was one of the questions I had, because, you know, when you're going right up against a river like that and you're drilling so deep, where the water table comes into play and what potential things could we be looking at as, you know, potential change orders or different method of getting it done?
So...
Because of the challenges you would run into if you're trying to...
So, as a comparison, Alexandria is building, building a six hundred and fifty million dollar tunnel now and it's under the Potomac River, directly under the Potomac River in a lot of cases, and it's in soft rock or soft ground, it's not in rock. So, they're having to do other things to mitigate, mitigate that as well.
Got it.
So, there's ways to do it and...
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just trying to think as many quints as I can.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I may, just, just quickly before Tim takes his seat, I, I have the awesome opportunity to work with twelve, twelve hundred employees, fantastic departments, and recently sent you kind of a year, fiscal year in, kind of some really cool things that each of our departments have done and been given awards for. Tim's gonna dislike this, but I'm gonna focus on him for one quick second. I, I have fun, I call Tim Aquaman because of many, many different things, but recently AWA, the American Works Associate, American Waterworks Association, who is, has over fifty thousand public and private members worldwide and is the world's leading authority in safe drinking water, awarded Tim Mitchell the George Warren Fuller Award for an individual for distinguished service in the water supply field in commemoration of the sound engineering skill, the brilliant diplomatic talent and the constructive leadership which characterized the life of George Warren Fuller. So, I thought to acknowledge Tim and I, I think it's pretty cool that we have that.
That's wonderful, congratulations. Okay, moving on to our business item briefings. We will now go to our conditional use permit telecommunications tower, one oh nine Leroy Bowen Drive. This item will appear before council for action on August eighth, twenty twenty-three. It's Rachel Freshisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The subject property is located at one nineteen Leroy Bowen Drive and contains approximately two and five tenths acres. The property is currently undeveloped. The purpose of this CUP petition is to allow a one hundred and fifty-foot telecommunications tower in a B one C limited business district conditional. The city zoning ordinance provides that telecommunications towers are permitted by right in the B one district. However, if it is between one hundred and a hundred and fifty feet, it is subject to approval of a CUP from council. Planning commission will review this item at their meeting on July twenty-sixth. I realize the report in your packet says July eleventh. Just yesterday, we realized there was an issue with legal notice in the newspaper, had to reschedule to July twenty-sixth. However, city council public hearing should continue as scheduled on August eighth. The surrounding area is mostly undeveloped and zoned for commercial and industrial uses. The closest residentially zoned property is an R four district located approximately six hundred feet away on Old Mill Row, Old Mill Road, rather. However, the area is separated by an RC resource conservation area along Dreaming Creek. The proposed construction of the telecommunications tower should have minimal impact on the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Farley?
Just a quick question, if I may, I know it hasn't gone to planning commission yet, but since I had you.
Right.
The proximity, there was a map, maybe going back one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was trying to find it on here while you were talking.
Is there, there's more attached?
Here's what I was asking.
Okay.
The closest is the Old Mill Townhome Community, but there's also Sandusky, which is farther, but is there any study or visuals to be seen from the Sandusky neighborhood looking that direction for that height?
So, the zoning ordinance requires that they submit elevations from each direction from the closest roads. I can pass along council's interest in seeing from the Sandusky area to see if they would be willing to do that, but it's not required and they didn't provide it.
I, I would be interested in that, just recognizing that Sandusky's there, given the topography, if you go downhill from that part of Timberlake and up towards Shules, you may have some viewpoints from one small or two apartment complexes.
Okay.
But once you get into Richland Hills, they're blocked very nicely by those big apartments, so I don't know if you'll see it, but needless to say, that'd be something of interest for me is just blowing up that viewpoint to the Sandusky area might be of interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Hellison?
This area, so how, how much land will the tower take on this entire parcel? Is it a small place? I, I just, I guess I'm hopeful that it's not a sign that says, hey, this isn't gonna be developed. So, instead of developing some good business land, you know, I think we had talked about this one a few years ago with maybe the engineering firm, I believe. Is that the same place or my?
It was rezoned, actually. Your name was mentioned as a planning commission member, that may be what you're remembering. The whole area was rezoned B one C, I think with a vision of a business park. I guess all the parcels haven't been fully built out. The area that they are leasing on the site, the whole site is two point five acres and they're leasing point two, three of the acres.
So, this isn't gonna preclude that the possible business expansion here because it's a small...
Right.
It's using a quarter of an acre as opposed to two and a half acres, so...
Yeah, and as, as you can see, they've set it off to the side as much as they can to meet, to still meet the setbacks, because they have to be seventy-five feet off the property line to be fifty percent of the tower height is what the setback is required. But they've set kind of off to the side and I think partly with the intent of future business going there if, if it needs to.
And since you mentioned that, that's interesting, like back in ninety-six when I was on the planning commission, very different with regarding cell phone and cell phone towers versus now. I mean, what is it, thirty-some years later? You know, everybody has a cell phone. Back then, it was all like, oh my goodness, we gotta hide this, we gotta make sure nobody can see this cell tower, because there's three people that are gonna use it and, and obviously the connectivity is, is fantastic. So, some of those concerns back thirty years ago are probably fairly well mitigated today. So, thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay. Commissions?
Just one question, and I think you might be familiar with this maybe. Kind of going off of Vice Mayor Farley's concerns, I know that I've seen in other localities, I'm specifically remembering Newport News, where they make these things look like redwood trees.
So, actually, our, our ordinance does have a stealth design requirement. We'll be working with them to figure out what the best choice is in this case. As you can see, it's gonna be hard to blend in with anything at this height, even if it does look like a tree. But yes, that, that is part of our ordinance.
Well, they don't blend in in Newport News. I just remember being at a ballgame last summer out there, one of my kids was in a tournament and we're at this ball field in the middle of this residential community and I just look and I'm like, that's a big tree, no, that's a cell phone.
It's pretty obvious.
But, but it's, but it's still, I mean, it, it just does a little bit of something to make it a little more appealing to the eye.
[inaudible] really big pink penguin or whatever, flamingos standing there.
They actually, they have all kinds. I looked at farm silos, windmills. If you're in the desert area, they have like saguaro cactuses or cacti, yeah, so...
I think I'll add more to that.
Mayor, I think Mr. Mr. was also referred, there's the port of Virginia in Norfolk also at some point painted their, their cranes blue to, to kind of blend in with the sky and that, that helped because previously they were kind of a very, you know, stark, stark color that stood out, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder?
I just want to commend the city for all the great work they're doing. So, thank for the city manager sent us a list of all the awards, again, we want to talk about that, all the wars that came in, hopefully that's published somewhere. Sometimes you hear so much negative things about the city, that negative information is good to hear consistent positive information about all the great things and the great wars that our city staff members are doing, so we want to really commend our city. Also, I had the privilege to ride on a bus trip to North Carolina to see the statue of the M W Thornhill that's coming along, so thank for the city for making that possible, for our project possible on such historic area, Fifth Street, where his business was and how he gave so much to our city, so I want to commend the city for, for working with that project. And also, they've had several events, the one in the community, one voice, and city streets recent, I think there's one today, I believe in Dom Hill. I want to commend all of our community partners for making our community better and safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dolan?
I have nothing.
Councilman Huggins?
No items.
Commissions?
I got a few things. One, I received a message from a constituent about the water, stormwater sewer rates going up. So, I'd like to see something probably placed on future agenda to take a look at that account charge and see if we can reduce that account charge to offset the increase in the water and sewer rates, whatever the average, I think you said it was like five dollars and now it's seven dollars and sixty-nine cents for that account charge. So, what would it look like if we were to reduce that by the average increase in the water bill to help these folks out? And then, something kind of bad happened over the weekend, but it was pretty interesting to see how people kind of rise to the occasion and go out of their lane to help. On eight fifteen Sunday morning, I got a phone call from Kenny Turner, the Italian Chief, I know you know him, with the fire department, and with the situation with one of our firefighters who was on a cruise having a heart attack. He didn't know what to do, didn't know how to help, wanted to help, felt kind of useless. And what he told me was he was still stuck on the ship and they couldn't get him off and there were all kinds of issues. And I called our congressman, Bob Good, and by nine o'clock, he was in communication with the Coast Guard. They were tracking him, they were aware of the situation and they were, they were helping try to move, move the needle and they were actually prepared, they had aircraft, I guess, on standby to go get him if the private flights weren't gonna work out. And it was just so incredible and wonderful to see our congressman, you know, on a Sunday morning when we're all getting ready for church. That's what I was doing, that's what he was doing, to, to take the time out, to put his district director on it and to go to work to try to, you know, bring one of our own, one of our first responders back from essentially abroad, because they're outside of the territorial waters of the United States, and to bring them back in to get the medical care they need in the United States. I just want to thank him for whatever role that he played in that to, to kind of get things moving, because I know when I got that phone call, he was still stuck on the ship and I'm pretty familiar with those situations and how life-threatening they can be and the situation that he was in was very life-threatening. So, I'm just very thankful. I know I saw on the agenda, we've got a proclamation for Bert Dotson this, this evening, and I would like to see a proclamation for our congressman. I'd be happy to write it, just for his willingness to, to, you know, get out of his lane and get involved and do whatever it took to help out one of our first responders in need and also one of his constituents. You know, I just think it says a lot of somebody to be able to do that.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes? I would like to see the chaotic parking addressed in Lynchburg. Several times, I've almost had head-on collision, collision with people parking in the wrong direction. They cross the street, look at you mean, after they have almost caused the accident just to park wrong. It, it need to be addressed.
Phil?
That's it, thank you.
Vice Mayor Farley?
No items.
Okay. All right. Well, during my tenure as mayor, I intend to acknowledge the work of each of our fantastic city departments. The city manager proposed acknowledging these departments alphabetically and the next one on the list is the Department of Emergency Services. The Department of Emergency Services provides nine-one-one services to all the citizens of Lynchburg. They dispatch police, fire and EMS services to all emergency calls, calls, as well as handle all non-emergency calls. On a typical day at emergency services, employees will handle an average of three hundred and sixty-four incoming calls, one hundred and twenty-one outgoing calls, one hundred and forty-four calls entered for dispatch, seventy unit initiated calls, as well as administrative duties. In addition to the primary task of providing access to police, fire and EMS, the public safety communication specialists provide numerous types of pre-arrival instructions for medical calls, including drowning, childbirth protocol, CPR instructions, gunshot wounds and more. The employees at emergency services are the first people to gather clues and cues about an emergency. The information gathered by emergency services is vital to helping the police, fire and EMS responders form an early understanding of what they will be facing upon arrival at an emergency scene. Did you know that there is another division of the Department of Emergency Services that focuses on emergency management? This division seeks to promote safer, less vulnerable communities with the capacity to cope with hazards and disasters. This function of the emergency services involves managing and a training and exercise plan for the city employees, providing emergency preparedness information to the citizens maintaining an emergency operations plan, which defines how city departments work together during a state of emergency and building partnerships that will assist the city in handling emergency that are larger than routine. So, thank you to our emergency services department. Okay, we will now move on to consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments for vacancies to the following boards and commissions. Central Virginia Community College Board of Directors, Economic Development Advisory, Historic Preservation Commission, Martin Luther King Junior Lynchburg Community Council and Museum Advisory Board pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. May I have a motion to go and close meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Can you vote, please? All right. Great.